Great, thank you all so much for being here. My name is David Levitt, I'm LA. I'm the founder and executive director of LA Ford Institute. Yeah, it's just really such a pleasure to have so many of the candidates here today. So many of you, nearly 100 of you already, and that'll grow. And so many community members here who are going to be asking some, I think, really important, sharing some important stories, asking some important questions. LA Ford Institute is a 501(c)(3) organization. We don't support or endorse or oppose candidates for office. Now we're not allowed to legally. And our mission, we're dedicated to creating a fair flourishing LA County for everybody. Through civic engagement and civic education, community organizing, a whole wide variety of things. And you can learn more about us at laford.institute online. You may have heard of an organization similarly named LA Ford, that's a 501(c)(4). That organization does do endorsements sometimes in local races. But this forum is not partisan, it's not related to that, and we won't be. This forum has really no connection to any endorsement process. So without further ado, I want to just thank you all for being here and turn it back over to Godfrey to get us started.
Thank you so much, David. Hi, everybody. My name is Godfrey Plata. My pronouns are he/him/his. I'm the deputy director at LA Ford Institute and super excited to welcome you all to our fourth council district candidate forum. And this one for council district 14. Thank you all if you've joined us before, welcome if you haven't. As you can see, we've got a full room. Folks who are interested, just to make sure that we are on the same page about what brings us together. There is an election coming up in Los Angeles in 2024. We know we've typically referred to an election day, and that election day is March 5th. But in Los Angeles and in California, we receive mail-in ballots a month before that. So really, we're talking about an election month that is coming up between February and March. All of the even-numbered districts in LA City Councils, 15 city council districts are up for election. And so you're here to see what happens and learn from candidates in one of them, which is Council District 14, which you'll hear about in a moment. There are many candidates in this race. We invited everybody who had filed since a couple of weeks ago. You may have heard that there were new candidates since then who have announced their candidacy. We continued with our program as was for folks who did confirm for today. Because there are many candidates, if no candidate is able to get 50% plus 1 of the vote in that election period, February through March, there will be runoffs between the top two candidates that will go all the way through November. And again, you'll have one month to vote between October and November at that juncture. You're going to learn about lots of candidates tonight. In order for your candidates who you favor to actually get on the ballot, they need to collect signatures to be able to arrive there. And that signature gathering arrives in November. So it was important for us to make sure that we were exposing candidates to their constituents much earlier than November and make sure that they were able to make connections with folks whose values and issues align with them. That's where we're headed. I want to pass things off to a resident, Sasha Rappaport, to tell us a little bit about council district 14. Sasha?
Great, thanks so much, Godfrey, and thank you, David. That's right, my name is Sasha, Sasha Rappaport. My pronouns are he/him, and I am a longtime LA Ford volunteer and current board member. And I've lived here in Highland Park with my wife and kids for the last 10 years. Personally, during the pandemic, I helped reinstate and then co-chaired the Historic Highland Park Neighborhood Council's Housing, Renters, and Homelessness Ad Hoc Committee to help support and give voice to the most vulnerable members of our community. I've also seen firsthand how the lack of affordable housing in our communities has made it incredibly difficult to rehouse and keep housed low-income working-class families and seniors within our community. Like every council district, council district 14 is huge and diverse. It includes communities such as Boyle Heights, Lincoln Heights, El Serrino, Northeast LA, and Downtown LA, including Little Tokyo and Skid Row. Tonight, we have nine candidates with us who have filed for the 2024 election to represent us here in District 14. And we'll be getting to know them in two groups, so we get to know each of them without being overwhelmed by nine candidates at once. So for tonight, in the first group, we'll get to know Assembly Member Wendy Carrillo, Isabel Horado, Assembly Member Miguel Santiago, and Eduardo Lalo Vargas. In the second group, in the 7:00 PM hour tonight, we'll get to know Samir Batar, Dr. Nadine Diaz, Jenny Guerrero, Teresa Hillary, and former council member Nick Pacheco. I want to thank all the candidates for joining us tonight for this discussion on the issues facing our district and our city. Thank you so much for joining us here this evening.
Thank you so much, Sasha, for getting us started tonight with some grounding in the context of council district 14. We want to make sure that everybody is clear on the container that we're creating here tonight and the rules for today's forum. Here's what you're going to see tonight. You're going to see every candidate, when their round is up, with a 90-second opening statement first. They've been told this in advance. They have 90-second opening statements prepared. You're going to see them one right after another. At the very end of each round, all of the candidates who spoke during that round will also get a 90-second closing statement. In between the opening and closing statements, you're going to see four issue questions asked by different residents that have organized alongside LA Ford Institute. Most of those issue questions will give 60-second responses. One of those issue questions will get a 90-second response. And so you'll hear the timing accordingly. You all see this timer in the top right-hand side of the screen I am sharing. That timer will be on and being timed for each response, so that everybody knows, candidates, audience, et cetera, knows how much time is left. And we've prepared the residents who are prepared to ask these questions to also interrupt politely in case someone is going over with their response. We know there's a chat box. We know there's lots of excited folks here. Today, we asked that the chat is for education and resources. If you'd like any other type of chat, we request that you go to Twitter for that or other spaces for that. Because we really want to be focused on hearing the responses and being educated by them. We've shared all of these questions in advance with all of the candidates that you see on the screen. We've mentioned that there's going to be two rounds of question asking tonight. So you see everybody on your screen who is in the first round and in the second round. You'll notice that they're in alphabetical order by last name. What's going to happen is we're going to start in this order for opening statements. Then, as every question gets asked from there, they're going to rotate. So what you're going to see is Assembly Member Carrillo will have her opening statement first. And then for the first question, she will go last, while the second person, Isabel Horado, will then go first. We'll ask that folks are on mute during the entire call as well. We will continue just mute you if your mute comes off. But just to make sure that everybody knows the rotation from here, that's what you can expect from this call. Here are the issues that we are asking about tonight. Again, all questions have been shared in advance with the candidates. So folks have had equal opportunity to prepare for this call, whatever responses they want you to know. You're going to get to know each of the residents prior to each question in round one. And then the same residents are going to come back to ask their question again in round two to those candidates. But they will not share sort of their introductory story or context. They're just going to jump straight to the question in round two. So that's what you'll see during that second half as well. That's it from our end in terms of setting context. Let's get going with what you are here to do, which is learn about each of these candidates. Again, we have four candidates getting started in the first round. The first of those candidates with an opening statement is Assembly Member Wendy Carrillo. Assembly Member?
Thank you. Is it the time we're going to start?
Yep.
Okay, great. Well, good evening, everyone. Thank you, Godfrey, and thank you to everyone that helped put this together. My name is Wendy Carrillo. I proudly represent the 52nd Assembly District. Homegrown in this community, grew up in Boyle Heights. I lived in various different parts of the district in Highland Park. I live in El Serrino now, and I'm really honored to join you all this evening. And I just want to say thank you to all the candidates that are running as well. I know there's a lot of dedication to this community, and I think that's important to recognize. I'm the proud co-author and principal author of some of the strongest tenant protections that we've had during COVID-19 that are now even more important than ever before. I'm also the author of COVID-Peaked Sick Leave that was extended three times amid the pandemic, which helped save thousands and thousands of lives across the state of California. And it was the first of its kind across the nation. I want to focus on things that are important to our community. Affordable housing, creating more housing across our district, and really understanding and really having a responsible approach towards chronic homelessness, mental health issues, substance abuse issues, public safety, supporting our fire department, which has to manage and support all the issues that are taking place across our community. Having a great relationship with our local hospitals and community clinics to be able to expand services. And at the end of the day, really support the working families across our district. So thank you for the opportunity to join you all tonight.
Thank you. Thank you so much, Assembly Member. Our next candidate is Isabel Horado. Isabel?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, there you go. Go ahead and with your opening statement.
All right. Hi, everyone. My name is Isabel Horado. My pronouns are she/her. I want to thank you, LA Ford, for putting this on while I'm running, because I'm sick and tired of electing the same old career politicians using our taxpayer dollars as their personal piggy bank or the position for their launchpad of their career. I'm sick and tired of the trash not getting picked up on Tuesday and my sidewalks taking eight years to get repaired. I'm sick and tired of having to see my neighbors being forced out of their homes because the rent is too high or the salon down my street closing down because they can't afford to stay there. And I'm sick and tired of the same old talking points and failed policies that got us to where we are today. We need someone who is from and for this community in City Hall, someone who actually understands the struggles that these career politicians just talk about, and that's why I'm running. I'm a lifelong resident of this district. I'm a daughter of undocumented Filipino immigrants. I was a single teen mom and put myself through UCLA with the help of my community to become an attorney for the communities I come from, defending workers against wage theft and tenants against evictions. We need to stop electing the same career politicians in this district and LA and expecting different results. It's time for change, and it's time for one of us in City Hall. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Our next candidate is Assembly Member Miguel Santiago. Assembly Member?
How are you, everybody? And thank you very much for having us, LA Ford. I want to thank David and Godfrey for having us here today and everybody who's watching. We're grateful that you're here today to the candidates. I'm excited about the quality of candidates, and I'm excited about the candidacies. And I'm grateful that there's wide participation at this forum, so I look forward to this conversation. I'm running to give voice to working people and the families in one of the most underrepresented, underserved districts in Los Angeles. And I want to deliver on the priorities that are important to this community. Look, we have a strong record of prioritizing and delivering on the needs of this district since when I was on the community college to the time that I'm in the legislature. We fought very early for funding for homelessness. In fact, I tried to declare to make sure that we had a state of emergency on the issue of homelessness way back in 2016. Today, we're fighting to cut bureaucratic red tape and make sure that housing is built for affordable housing, emergency shelters, and those things that are absolutely necessary to get our unhoused population with a roof over their heads. We have fought for healthcare access, fought in an established free community college. We fought and led the fight to clean up X site. And during COVID, we didn't shut down. We walked. We made sure that people had the resources that they need. We did food deliveries. We made sure that we got renters assistance programs out there and fought for tenant protection programs. Made sure that we knock on residence stores so we could help them where they needed it. And today, we're running the city council to tackle those issues that are important for the districts and the residents. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much. Right on time. Our next candidate, and the last one for this particular round, is Eduardo Lalo Vargas. Lalo?
Good evening, everyone. I'm really excited to share with you my socialist platform for how we can make Los Angeles a city for working families and not the rich. My name is Eduardo Sequiel Vargas. Everyone in my community calls me Lalo. I was born and raised by immigrants from Morelia, Michoacan. And in my upbringing, our family faced so many of the same issues that so many of our families in this district face to this day. Fear of deportation, housing and job insecurity, losing everything to poverty or some medical emergency. Unfortunately, these are not anomalies. These are features of a capitalist system that values profit over people's livelihoods. I'm running for city council as a socialist, as a teacher, as a former first responder, and as a tenant organizer, because it's time that we put political power in the hands of the working class, the people who make this city run. I'm not running to be the representative of the wealthy, of the developers, of the people who gentrify and displace our community. Every election cycle, they get their representatives, they get their candidates in the corporate Democratic Party. But this time, the working class needs its own candidate, somebody who has nothing to lose by putting the needs of working-class families in this district first. I'm running as a socialist because I believe that housing is a human right, that we need to put an end to police terror, and that the community and the working class must be empowered by their government to do so. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Lalo. Those are your four candidates for this first round. And now we're going to start heading into the issue questions. We're going to start with a question from resident Marissa Roy. Again, these are one-minute questions, except for one of them a little bit later on. Marissa?
Thanks, Godfrey. Oh, I think I'm off mute. Thanks, Godfrey. Hi, everybody. Thank you to the candidates for being here. My name is Marissa Roy. She/her pronouns. I'm a civil rights attorney who lives in downtown Los Angeles in the Pershing Square area. A very happy resident of CD14. But I think CD14 faces a lot of unique challenges. I remember walking, I host trivia in the district, and I was walking to the bar where I host trivia. And I remember walking by and hearing this agonizing screaming and coming toward it and seeing at least nine LAPD and LAFD officers holding down a black woman who appeared to be homeless. And I didn't know what to do. What could I do? Call the police? They were the ones creating the problem. And I just sat in horror and downloaded the ACLU app and recorded it and hoped that someone would be able to act on it. About 30 minutes later in the bar, when I was hosting trivia, a man experiencing homelessness walked in and clearly needed help. And the bartender was about to call 911. And after that, I begged him, please, anything but calling 911, anything but calling the police. And we were able to talk with the gentleman, get him money for food, and he was able to go to a food truck outside. But I just remember the honest question the bartender had about, well, what do I do? What do you want me to do? I don't have a good alternative. And so I think that is really motivating my question today about unarmed crisis response. So in your vision for LA, what types of incidents do you think are appropriate for police to respond to, if any? And what do you believe should be attended to outside of police, if any? What models of unarmed crisis response are you interested in, and how would you fund this and make this a reality?
We're going to start with Isabel Horado.
Thanks, Marissa, and what a story you shared. And not uncommon in CD14. Our city's budget is a moral document and a reflection of our priorities. And I think it's time that our budget adheres to my values, LA Ford Institute's values. I mean, in the first three days of this year, the LAPD killed three men. The police stopped one of them at a traffic stop where there was a traffic collision, and the other two were in a mental health crisis. Make Keenan, Oscar, and Takar rest in peace. CD14 has the most number of arrests, 70% of whom are Black and Brown members of our community. And out of nearly 40,000 arrests of unhoused people in this entire city, nearly half of them occur in this district. The police department is the most funded department in the city of LA, and yet people don't feel safer. And so we need to have traffic stops conducted by unarmed service providers, mental health crisis. And we can do this by reallocating our funds in the budget, which should align with our values, true care for our communities.
Thank you. Assembly Member Santiago?
Yeah, and thank you very much for the question. I've too have been in the experience where I've gone out and helped folks who are homeless. One of the things I learned in many cases is if you provide them with the services and help them to get connected to housing, in many cases, they will take it. So I definitely think there's a place for an unarmed crisis response. And in fact, the newly recently created Office of Unarmed Response and Safety is a good step forward to making sure that there's alternative responses to those nonviolent, noncriminal incidences where somebody clearly needs that sort of help, to be connected to wraparound services. I'm pained by the examples that you showed, because I think it tells us that there's a new approach that needs to happen if we are to truly solve the problems that we're facing today. And in the case that somebody has mental health care issues or substance abuse issues, I think there is an approach for an armed response unit. So thank you very much for the question.
Thank you, Lalo.
Thank you so much for your question, Marissa. Speaking to the community, I've seen that so many residents feel the same. They have similar experiences to the one that you had, and people are actually afraid of the police. Despite the police budget being funded with increasing, receiving increases to their budget year after year, people still don't feel safe in their communities. And the communities where people do feel safe, those are often the wealthiest communities, not the ones with cops on every single block. So a socialist solution to public safety means reinvesting the wealth back into our communities so that we can have community resources like stable housing, access to healthcare, jobs, dignified livelihoods for people, so that way we can start to transition the police away from places like schools and public transit systems. And then a socialist government can actually empower the community to have violence interruption programs that are led by community leaders who are best equipped to solve the problems of their very own community.
Thank you. Assembly Member Carrillo?
Thank you, Marissa, and thank you for sharing that very incredibly impactful story. I think that we have all experienced something like that. I too have been in a situation where I've been wanting to help and even in an elected office position, often limited in what's available. So I'm really glad, actually, that in June of this year, the LA City Council voted unanimously 12 to 0 to start the Office of Unarmed Response. Look, LAPD nor FIRE have been trained to do the work of mental health crisis. That needs to be something that we need to look at in a more holistic approach. The state legislature just passed Care Court, which would allow judicial discretion for individuals that are chronically homeless and experiencing mental health issues. I know it's an incredibly controversial piece of policy, and I admit that. But I also believe that there's nothing really... What kind of society have we become when we have become so incredibly desensitized and are stepping over people that are living on the street and are, you know, obviously in need of great help? So working with police, I think, and trying to figure out what that looks like is important.
That is the time.
Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't see the... Thank you.
Thank you so much, Marissa, for that question. And our next resident, who'll be answering or asking a different question, is Carla DePaz. Carla?
Hi, folks. I'm Carla DePaz. Can you hear me?
Yes, there you go.
Great, okay. I'm Carla DePaz. I'm an organizer with Community Power Collective. I've been organizing in the East Side for about 13 years now. And Community Power Collective works with tenants, long-term tenants, most of them who are street vendors in the East Side, but also in other parts of the city. You know, and like, you know, we've heard throughout this forum and we've been experiencing, especially through this time of COVID, folks are really struggling to stay housed. And yeah, we work with tenants every day, and we see how folks are experiencing a really terrible lack of balance in terms of the power between landlords and tenants. Tenants are living in terrible conditions. We really believe housing is a human right, but we don't think that we're going to be able to meet that vision if housing continues to be seen as a commodity. So my question to y'all is relates to social housing and trying to build a different housing system than what we have now. In 2022, voters said yes to measure ULA, which created a transfer tax to fund affordable housing and homelessness prevention in LA. Its funding creates a pot of money for many types of affordable housing, including alternatives like social housing. The Act of the Coalition, which Community Power Collective is a member of, has been inspired by housing options in cities like Vienna and New York City. I got to visit Vienna actually earlier this year, and it was really amazing to see the investment they have in housing, housing that is not made for a few people to profit off of, but it's actually for everyone. Yeah, and our coalition is working with council now to approve social housing that is designed to be permanently affordable, built on public lands, and ultimately managed by its tenants. Actulay Social Housing Platform envisions 8,000 social housing units in the next 10 years. So my questions to you are, do you support social housing in Los Angeles? What would you do to make this a reality? And do you support other paths to decomodifying housing? And if so, what are those paths? And I think we'll send the question first to Assembly Member Carrillo.
I think it's Assembly Member Santiago first. Assembly Member?
Yeah, thank you very much for the question. And the answer is yes, I support social housing. In fact, I supported the bills in the legislature to move forward the conversation of social housing. And that was, I believe, AB 309. And in fact, I've written legislation lately to make sure that we expedite the usage of those funds like ULA, HHH, that we get more permanent supportive of housing online as quickly as possible so that we get all the funding mechanisms under government expedited, because we can't wait any longer. And I don't think you could have said it any stronger than you did, that housing is a human right. I asked the chair of the Housing Committee in Assembly the number of housing units that we need in the state of California just recently, and she stated 3.5 million. And of that, close to half of it is low-income and affordable housing. So we have got to push for housing as hard as we can. Los Angeles has to build 455 units of housing, half of which is affordable housing. So we cannot stop until it's built, because people deserve better. Thank you.
We'll send the questions now to Lalo.
As I also support social housing, but we also need to look at the fact that in Los Angeles, there's more empty housing units than there are people living on the streets and in encampments. The city council has the power to take those empty units. And instead of letting them sit on the market for speculation, we could seize them and redistribute them to the people and make housing a human right. We also need to go further than a vacancy tax, and we need to overhaul the housing and building and safety departments. So these departments are actually defending tenants' rights, the laws that are supposed to be protecting tenants. And we need stronger tenant protections and stronger penalties on landlords so that those who are not keeping their housing in adequate living situations have their property seized by the city and redistributed to the tenants. We believe that a socialist program can actually improve the livelihoods and can actually create paths for social housing by formalizing the relationship and the bargaining rights of tenants' unions, just like a workers' union would have. This way, we can make LA, instead of being a city known for its houselessness and its gentrification, to one that's the capital of tenant power in this country.
Thank you. And now I will send it over to Assembly Member Carrillo.
Thank you, and thank you for the question. Yes, I support social housing. In fact, I've been supporting that policy for the past few years as a principal co-author of the policy. AB 309 finally made it out of committee with a lot of support from the legislators, and it's now on the governor's desk to be potentially signed into law. In addition, one of the biggest pieces of policy that we move forward in the state is AB 2011, which expedites the increase of new construction. But I do want to say that we have to be responsible in building. For a community like Boyle Heights, for example, the median income is $30,000. Building market rate is very different than building affordable housing, and we need to be responsible about what that looks like. In the legislature, our chair, our budget committee, related to housing and homelessness and dollars that come into the county and into the city, we have invested $17 billion in 2019, $21.5 billion in 2021 and 22. All that funding goes to the county and to the cities, and we need to figure out to build and to ensure that people are housed. Housing is absolutely a human right.
Thank you, Assembly Member. And lastly, Isabel Horado?
Hi, thank you, Carla, for your question. Look, these career politicians have contributed to the failed policies that got us to where we are today. Of all of us in this panel, there's only one of us that was in the courtroom defending somebody at risk of being evicted, because we didn't have the policies in the city that reflect the needs of our community, which is social housing. I've been on the front lines, putting my body on the line to defend tenants from illegal evictions, especially during the height of the pandemic. There is only one of us here that strives to push the city, counties, and states on the issue of vacant property in the state to increase affordable housing for Angelenos. As an attorney who works with community land trusts in this district to acquire properties to decommodify housing, and I've helped form housing cooperatives here in LA where low-income tenants have a pathway to become homeowners, I'm already engaging in making social housing a reality in here in Los Angeles with the ULA advocates. And I could set the baseline... with the ULA advocates, and I could set the baseline as the council member.
Thank you so much for your answers. Um, and I really hope we can make housing as a human right a reality in Los Angeles, and I will pass it over to Jessica.
And Jessica, right before you get started, just want to remind everybody that at the beginning of the call, we asked that the chat, uh, be reserved primarily for education and resources. I know there's lots of exciting conversation. We asked that you take the exciting conversation to Twitter and other similar locations. Back to you, Jessica. Thanks so much.
Thank you so much, Godfrey. Hey, good evening, folks. My name is Jessica Panduro with Inner City Struggle, long-term resident of CD14, Boyle Heights specifically. Pronouns are she/her/they. My question is regarding the city council expansion. Our current city council doesn't represent the needs of this type of city. We are in need of neighborhood-centered resources and are living in a housing crisis. This current city council is not representative of all of our neighborhoods, and we need to move this to reality. So my question to you all is, LA has had 15 city council districts since 1925, when our population was radically different. Now, almost 100 years later, each council member represents over 264,000 people, giving us the highest ratio of residents to council member in the nation. Compare that with 170,000-plus people to each council member in New York, or 54,000-plus people to each o- other person in Chicago. Do you support city council expansion to provide equitable representation for all Angelenos? How many seats do you think we should have, or the appropriate population per council district and why? And we'll get started with Lalo.
Yeah, we need to break up the districts, and we need to drastically increase the number of city council members and reduce the proportion of constituents per council member. But we actually need to go further than even Chicago. We need to rectify decades and actually centuries of institutional racism. We should be guaranteeing seats on the council for the Black community and for all other oppressed nationalities that live in this city. We also need to expand voting rights to undocumented immigrants, who make up such a big proportion of the working class of the city and who create its immense wealth, yet up until now, still do not have a political voice over the legislation of this city. That's, that's what our platform is envisioning. We need equitable representation for everyone, and that means rectifying the decades of injustice. Contrary to the candidates that were exposed to be racist and corrupt last year, I don't see politics in Los Angeles as a zero-sum game, but we need to build the working class into an organization that will take political power. Thank you.
Thank you. Assemblymember Wendy Carrio.
Thank you for the question. Um, look, we saw what the redistricting process looked like. We're coming up on the one-year anniversary of the leaked audio recordings. The city council is already looking to expand and look into the, the city charter as to what that would look like to expand. There's conversations somewhere between 21 and 25. But one of the council members is thinking about 30. I would support, I would support those, those efforts. There's policies in the state legislature that we're moving forward that would look into the redistricting, redistricting process for cities and counties as large as the County of Los Angeles and the City of Los Angeles. I also think that it's important that, when it comes to planning, that there is equal distribution amongst all the council districts to ensure that everyone is creating housing, uh, for equally across the board. And that is also a part of the conversation when it comes to populations for the city council. In the assembly, I represent 500,000 people with a staff of four in the district. It's incredibly unequal, and that can also be changed at the city council level.
Thank you. Isabel Jurado.
Hi there. Thank you for your question. We definitely have to expand the city council, and I'm willing to cede my power, if elected as council member, to do so. And 25 is the floor for expansion. Increasing city council members would mean smaller districts, and this is great for Angelenos for three reasons. Accessibility for better service delivery. Look, my 80-year-old neighbor has been complaining about the sidewalk for years and has been having, uh, you know, having trouble getting a hold of her council member. Finally tripped and had to get a metal implant in her wrist, uh, to keep it stable. And if we had smaller districts, she could contact her council member, and ideally, they'd be more responsive. Two, diverse representation. Boyle Heights and downtown LA don't look the same, and their needs are different. And the fact that I'd be the first Filipina ever elected in city council, uh, is surprising, and it's a matter of fact that the Filipino neighborhoods haven't been grouped together. And lastly, government reform. We want to prevent the corruption that led us to why there's so many of us on this call today running, to reduce the incentives for corruption.
Thank you so much. Uh, Assemblymember Miguel Santiago.
Yeah, thank you very much for the question, and I see all approaches to government reforms as opportunity to better government. That's the bottom line. This, this question is absolutely incredibly important, that we should have a larger city council that is directly accountable to the people and that is directly at the doorsteps of the people. That means that they can reach their council member when it comes to the big stuff, and it also comes to the small stuff, because it's very important that you have access to every representative. We should take a look at all government reforms, put them on the table, because we need to make government accountable to people for the people. And in fact, we supported legislation this year to make sure that there was independent redistricting. I couldn't be more in agreeance that we've got to do all that we possibly can for the accountability, the transparency, and bringing government back to people. And I look forward to serving on the city council, making that happen.
Thank you all, um, candidates for your response. I'll pass it over to Lindsay.
Great, thank you. Good evening, good evening, everyone. My name is Lindsay Nolan. She/her pronouns. Born and raised in Southern California, I've lived in LA for 15 years and currently live in Pico Union. I'm a public health professional with a background in mobility, multimodal advocacy, and passionate about mobility justice, and currently serve as a senior regional planner at the Southern California, uh, Association of Government.
Sure.
Uh, I sold my car in 2017 to reduce my carbon footprint, and every day I experience the hostility of our built environment for everyone, especially people who don't have cars. Our streets are some of the most dangerous in the country, and the transit service and frequency is embarrassing. Sometimes I honestly think I'm delusional for staying car-free, and I don't blame other people who can afford other options at this point. It's not only incredibly frustrating and depressing, but frightening, given how dire the climate crisis is and how, how greenhouse gas emissions from the transportation sector are driving climate change. Moreover, we hurt the most vulnerable in our communities when we don't serve their mobility needs or protect them from the front lines of the climate crisis. Think transit-dependent seniors stuck waiting at a bus stop without shade during an extreme heat event. So my question is about policy implementation of climate and mobility plans in LA. And you will have 90 seconds, not 60, for this question. So the question is, LA City has a follow-through problem on both its climate and mobility plans. For mobility, the City of Los Angeles made a commitment to its residents with the Mobility Plan 2035, focusing on improving safety, access, infrastructure, data-informed decision-making, and healthy communities for all those that walk, ride, roll, and drive in the city. But since, since passing in 2015, less than 10% of the plan has been implemented. Similarly, we've, we've declared that we'll shift to 100% renewables by 2035, and oil drilling, cut car trips in half by 2035, and reduce greenhouse gas emissions by 25% by 2025. Yet we aren't on track for making any of these goals, some of which are enshrined in law. Knowing you can't do everything at once, which specific aspects of climate policy and mobility plan implementation are the biggest priority for your district? What steps would you take to ensure full implement, implementation of those parts of those priorities? Again, you'll have 90 seconds, not 60, for this question. First up, I'm going to pass the mic to Assemblymember Wendy Carrio.
Thank you for the question. Uh, as a matter of fact, just a little bit ago, we were doing a mobility panel, uh, with Streets for All on the importance of bike lanes across the LA River, and really the expansion of good transportation for working people across, uh, across, uh, Los Angeles. City 14 is surrounded by the 2, the 5, the 10, the 60, the 101, the 710, the 134 freeways, and maybe miss one. But that also means that the health of our community is also at play when it comes to transportation and climate goals. I think one of the most important things that we can do in council, and if I'm ever so privileged to be elected, is force the issue. And it's important that we also bring into the conversation our labor partners to ensure that we are creating the infrastructure necessary to achieve our goals. One of the bills that I've authored this year that has been a huge hurdle to even get through is AB 1167, which will ensure that oil companies are responsible for capping and cleaning, uh, those, the, the oil wells in which they're, they drill. There are close to 200 uncapped oil wells in our community, and it's important that the health and safety of residents is priority. Uh, we have a lot of climate goals that we have to achieve, and the only way that we do that is by forcing the conversation, making the motions necessary, and having uncomfortable conversations with those that want to ensure that we don't move this forward or that we don't meet our plans, um, as already stated by law.
Thank you, Assemblymember. Next up, we have Isabel Jurado.
Hi there. Thank you for your question. Climate and transportation to me are very interconnected issues, especially here in LA, which particularly affect low-income, working-class communities of color. And I believe the number one way to address climate change and environmental justice is by improving our public transit system, by ensuring it's safe, by installing things like protected bike lanes, affordable, uh, affordable, fare-free transit, accessible, using increased tree canopy for shade, and reliable, redrawing routes, uh, based on most use and efficiency, and finishing first-and-last-mile connections. Uh, when it comes to climate, we need to end urban, uh, oil drilling in our communities. My district, uh, the 14th, has 91 oil and gas wells that have an outsized impact on the health of our communities. The fact of the matter is that we have the mobility and climate plan, and these policies lack enforcement, because again, our budget is prioritizing policing over saving lives. We are in the midst of the climate crisis and nowhere near Vision Zero of zero-traffic fatalities, which is honestly a matter of life and death, especially because I've seen someone had to call 911 because someone got hit by a car on the corner of my street. I plan on working with community partners to achieve our mobility goals, climate goals, and environmental justice goals, and our campaign has already prioritized organized roundtables with residents and local experts, uh, experts on these issues. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, we have Assemblymember Miguel Santiago.
Hey, uh, thank you very much for the question. I got a little special guest just got home. Say hi. So thank you very much for the question. Look, Lindsay, I, I very much appreciate the question. I once, uh, tried to live car-free and, and cycled for a number of years there, and it was incredibly difficult to get across. There's no deep, no, no, no doubt that the hurdle of having to pay for transportation is a cost and a barrier. I think transportation should be free to the degree that we can, and I did that when I was on the LA Community College Board, where we incentivized students using transportation by making it free, and we reduced the amount of, of, uh, vehicles that drove, uh, to and from school. I think that, and I think it's incredibly important that we take climate change seriously. We just had a hurricane pass through Los Angeles. And it, it, and if, when we think about the impacts in our community, when we think about the pollution, we've got to do the big things like tackle climate change, but we've also got to do the small things that end up be, that end up saving our environment and saving lungs in our communities, like planting trees, like making sure that there's, uh, walls that so the, the bad pollution doesn't fall in our neighborhoods and our streets, like tackling X site to make sure that there isn't the pollution, uh, in our own backyards and our communities. So I am fully committed to tackling this, to making sure that there's dedicated bike lanes, to making sure that there's bus lanes, uh, all without stake, all with stakeholder input so that we don't have unintended consequences. It's our community. We've got to tackle this head-on and make it a first priority. Thank you.
Thank you so much. All right, and last but not least, Eduardo Lalo Vargas.
Thanks for your question. I am an AP Environmental Science teacher, so I spend every single day talking with our youth about climate problems and climate solutions, especially those that we can implement in our local community. The City of LA has all of the resources necessary to meet its climate goals, but what it doesn't have is its political will and the political leadership to actually achieve those climate goals. And that's because the wealthy, the people who stand to benefit from the exploitation of the environment to maximize their profits, they are not going to invest into the, they're not going to invest the resources that we actually need to attack the climate crisis. And their party is the Democratic Party, and for decades, we've been electing their candidates. That's why nothing has been able to, that's why we haven't been able to achieve, and that's why we're falling short of our climate goals. We could be doing so much to attack the climate crisis at scale. It doesn't have to be, uh, a issue that is fought by individuals. The city could do things like the City of Oakland, which implemented an ordinance that banned natural gas from being implemented and from being used in new construction. Immediately, the natural gas companies started mobilizing so that a similar ordinance wouldn't be passed in their state. That's the power of one city council. Here in LA, we can improve mobility, and we can improve rainwater runoff with updated sidewalks. We can have construction, construction materials that will reduce the heat island effect, and we can make free and mass public transportation for all, so that our elderly and anybody can access public transportation. And anytime there's a win for the environment, it's a win for the working class. But we're interested in creating a working movement of people that will actually pressure the government to meet those goals.
Thank you so much, and thank you to all of the candidates for your responses. I'm going to pass over to Sasha.
I want to reiterate and echo that sentiment. I want to thank all the candidates, first and foremost, to their, for their service to our communities here in CD14 and their time and thoughtful and concise responses tonight. We are now moving to the closing statements, um, so each of you will have 90 seconds to share whatever you want to leave, uh, our neighbors with tonight. Could be a conclusion, response to things the other candidates have shared, info to keep in touch, a song and dance, anything you want. We'll be rotating the, the order, um, in alphabetical order this time, uh, to go last. So we will start with Isabel Jurado. Please go ahead.
Thank you so much. These career politicians passed the failed policies that's got us to where we are today. And I'm not a career politician. I'm not accepting a dime from Big Oil, apartment associations, or the prison industrial complex. This is a people-powered campaign, and we can show the establishment what the power of our community can do. And I'm asking you to roll up your sleeves and join us on this journey. We will fight against gentrification that erases our history and culture. We will stand up to skyrocketing rents that threaten to displace us. We will champion housing as a human right and not a privilege. We will end the criminalization of poverty and homelessness by repealing 4118, and we will demand economic justice for our workers, especially our undocumented workers. And we will imagine, reimagine our criminal injustice system and invest in programs that empower our children and our communities so that they never have to choose between their dreams and survival. We will demand transparency, accountability, and justice from our institutions, and we have to stop electing the same career politicians and expecting different results. It's time for someone from and for this community, and it's time for one of us. My name is Isabel Jurado. Check out our website, isabeljurado.la. Thank you for all the thoughtful questions, attendees, and LA Forward Institute for putting this on, and, um, with other candidates.
Thank you. Assemblymember Miguel Santiago.
I want to thank LA Forward, and thank you, Sasha, and everybody who's helped coordinate this. This is one, uh, one of the forums that I've enjoyed very much, and so thank you very much for that. And all the residents of City 14, uh, who are out there, uh, thank you for being here and participating and watching this. And all the candidates, I'm extremely grateful for your thoughtful input. And, and I look forward, uh, to continuing the partnership, uh, during, during this and once, uh, one of us is successful in office. The reality is that people across the 14th district are struggling. Housing is a human right, and rents have increased, and the cost of housing has gone up so much that people cannot afford it anymore, and it's chipping away more at every person's dollar. They have to make the decision now between putting groceries on the table or fight, or fighting to make sure that they can pay the rent. It's gotten out of control. We have to step in, and we have to do something about it. Jobs have been sidelined, the cost of living is too expensive, and most people can't afford the things that they, that they were able to afford recently. I'm running for the city council to be the voice for the people, to make sure that we deliver for our district like we delivered free, uh, uh, public banks, like we delivered free community college, like we fought for the rental assistance program and the tenants' right protection that we delivered, and we have fought to make sure that undocumented immigrants are, are, are given the services that everybody else is. I am grateful to be here today. I look forward to the challenges solving homelessness with each and every one of you. It's the, it, it, the humanitarian crisis of our lifetime, and I'm grateful to be here. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Lalo Vargas.
I became a high school science teacher because I wanted to be the kind of teacher that I didn't have in my upbringing. I became a high school science teacher because I wanted to be the kind of teacher that I didn't have in my upbringing. One that was concerned not just with the struggles in the classroom, but with those in the larger community that interfere with students' learning. I'm not a career politician and I'm still having to work my full time job. And I'm also not getting my start in the Democratic Party. Because in the last two election cycles in this district, the Democrats chose candidates that were proven to be corrupt. And who are they giving us in this election cycle? They've given us Kevin De Leon, who is a proven racist and corrupt politician. They've given us two state assembly members who despite all of their power in Sacramento have done nothing for the working people of this city. They are funded by the same people as Kevin De Leon and they're friends with Kevin De Leon. Why would we vote for another Democrat when every time we elect them, the poor keep on suffering and the rich are the only ones coming out on top? The people are ready for their own candidate, a working class champion, a socialist fighter that will fight for their needs. And that has nothing to lose by putting their needs before those of a political career or access to wealth and power. If we don't allow ourselves to be distracted by these corporate Democrats. We will be able to achieve the things that they tell us are impossible. We can have housing as a human right. We can put an end to racist police terror. We can expand workers' rights so everyone has a dignified job and we can guarantee. That the needs of our families and of the planet are planned for and guaranteed, but we need a socialist in power. Let's make Los Angeles a city for working families and not the rich.
Uh, Assembly Member Wendy Carrillo.
Thank you. Uh, thank you again. And thank you to everyone that participated tonight, all of the candidates. And thank you to L A Forward. For putting this together. I'm, I'm really delighted to spend an evening with all of you. Um, you know, I came to this country when I was five years old, formerly undocumented, one of the original dreamers. My family fled a civil war in El Salvador. My grandfather was a bracero worker. Um, I'm proud to have grown up in the community of Boyle Heights. I. Had an experience in high school when I dropped out of high school and I was in tenth grade. And I was lucky to have good teachers around me to bring me back and I was able to graduate on time. I didn't go to college right away. I started working, got caught up in a recession, lost my job. And I had the opportunity to go to East L A College. And before I knew it, had enough time, had enough credits to go to Cal State L A and U S C, first generation American. I ran for office seven years ago be- because I felt a calling, a calling to respond to my community. And I won that election against eleven other men. Not a career politician. I wanted to respond to the needs of my community, working class men and women and all individuals like my parents, working class. Who, that they themselves were undocumented and had a pathway to residency and citizenship. I believe in this community. I believe in the power of this community. I'm a fighter for this community and I believe. That in the city council, we have an opportunity to improve the quality of lives of everyday people just trying. To live and provide for their families. And that's what I'm committed to. Thank you.
And thank you so much, um, Assembly Member, and thank you so much to our first four candidates who are getting to know tonight. Um, again, uh, there are uh at least ten candidates i- in the race and nine of us. Uh, nine of them are, are joining us tonight. Uh, those are our first four. Again, to repeat, um, Assembly Member. Uh, Wendy Carrillo, Isabel Gerardo, Assembly Member Miguel Santiago and Eduardo Lalo Vargas. If you have anything else. To place into the chat box, any links, email addresses, or anything where people can follow you or, or um, ask additional questions, feel free. Um, but we're going to move on to our second group of candidates of the nine who are joining us tonight. Um, and you see them on your screen on the bottom row there. Uh, that's Samir Batar, Dr. Nadine Diaz, Jenny Guerrero, Teresa Hillary and former council member Nick Pacheco. And so what everybody's going to see is, um, again, we're going to uh repeat. Uh, everything that the first four candidates just did. So we're going to start with a ninety second opening statements, um, going in alphabetical order. Um, and then we'll proceed with the four issue questions, same four issue questions. Uh, that you just saw in the previous round as well. We're going to keep rotating uh the candidates so that. Um, uh, each of them have the opportunity to go first or later on in that particular round. Uh, because you've heard the stories already that precipitated each of these questions, we're going to jump straight to the questions this time. Um, uh, to make room for a fifth candidate now in each and every round. So you're going to see the same residents, same question, but without the story and context that precipitated that question. Um, for with that, uh, we're going to get started again with our round of um. Opening statements for each of these candidates. Uh, we're going to start with Samir Batar. Again, these are ninety second opening statements. Samir? There you are. You're on mute, you're on mute, Samir?
Hey there.
There you are.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Samir. I represent a different kind of C D fourteen candidate. Even my name's different. I'm a gay veteran. I'm a first generation Arab American, born in L A. There, I just outed myself. I'm a small business owner and a civic arts leader. I am not from the political class. I don't have relationships with lobbyists and special interest groups. Instead. I have spent my career advocating at the community level. I serve on the downtown neighborhood council where I work directly with residents and businesses to solve problems. I'm offering something different. I've spent my life as an artist. As a civic arts leader, working to promote the regenerative power of the arts, as pathways for young people, as health interventions in trauma. As economic revitalizers for communities. Put simply, civic art saves lives. I know this because I've lived this. I grew up poor, marginalized and surrounded by family trauma, which is why I am so outspoken about the inclusion of the arts in public policy. I also believe that climate crisis that we're living through right now requires more urgency from leadership. I have not owned a car in twenty six years. I take public transportation every day and I know what's needed to get Angelenos out of our cars and onto the metro and buses. Public transit needs to be safe, comfortable and accessible. I'm running. Because we need a fresh, more collaborative approach to leadership. We've tried the career politician thing over and over and over again with the same disappointing results. I'm running to offer something different. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Samir. Um, our next candidate in this round with an opening statement of ninety seconds is Dr. Nadine Diaz. Dr. Diaz?
Thank you so much for this opportunity. Um, I am a third generation constituent of C D fourteen. I was born in nineteen sixty two. I'm a community activist and advocate, a social worker, a health provider and also a professor. I am running because I am tired of the corruption that has existed for over many decades. We have not had the proper leadership, the humanistic leadership to really truly care about our stakeholders. Our stakeholders are, are at a threat because of these career politicians. I'm not a musical chair politician. I did not move into the district to run to represent the district. I've been here. I work here. I pray here. I organize here. And we need new leadership. What has been happening has been hurting the quality of life for our constituents here. All ages, young, families, children, youth, adults, elderly, LGBTQ. Everyone has been at. Uh, at a, at a crossroads where we are dying. And it take, it's going to take a leader who is a social worker, who understands the needs of the community, who can assess. All situations and to work with everyone in the community. The stakeholders have a right to a seat at the table on what happens in C D fourteen. And I am that person who's going to lead you to that table. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Dr. Diaz. Right on time. Um, our next candidate in this round is Jenny Guerrero. Jenny?
Ma lo chilin kin ketech kilayun. Ma lo chilin kin taluka titech. Buenas tardes a todos. Gracias por acompañarnos. Yo soy hija de Carlos y Violeta Orbina. Good evening, everyone. Thank you for joining us today. My name is Jenny Guerrero, daughter of Carlos and Violeta Orbina. A moment ago, you heard me greet you in my, in honor of my indigenous Maya ancestral roots. I'm the honorary mayor of El Serino. I'm a daughter of El Serino. I was born and raised here. I am married to my high school sweetheart. I am a mother of five boys and I'm a Christian. I attend Mass with my family every Sunday. We're a military family of twenty three years and counting. I am not a career politician. I'm a community leader and an advocate. I have been actively helping my community for over twenty years. I have served on many nonprofit organizations, advisory boards, committees. I've spearheaded many projects. I organized the annual Independence Day parade, winter jubilee, distributing thousands of toys throughout C D fourteen. Food distributions, Memorial Veterans Day celebrations and more. All of being the primary caregiver to my children and working full time. I'm a small business owner specializing in nonprofit organizations. I'm an income tax preparer and authorized filer through the I R S. I'm a notary public. I am fluent in both English and Spanish. I have worked with technology companies and I've been a project manager, community, military, family liaison and have a wide range of experience. I even worked for C D fourteen many, many, many years ago as a senior field deputy.
Thank you so much, Jenny. Um, our fourth candidate in this round of five is Teresa Hillary. Teresa?
Yeah, can you see me?
There you are. There you are.
Good evening, good evening. I want to first of all, thank L A Forward for having this forum tonight. Also want to thank all of you for showing up. I recognize that you could have been anywhere tonight, but you've chosen to spend your time with us. I do not take that for granted. So thank you, thank you and thank you. My name, um, I've, uh, two, two decades ago, I moved to downtown Los Angeles to start my legal career. And when I learned about Skid Row, I immediately joined a church on San, San Pedro between Sixth and San Julian. To meet the needs of our unhoused neighbors. Nobody paid me to do that. It wasn't part of my job. I did that because I truly care about people. I truly love people and I want to see the best for people. I believe people, people power is what we need. Therefore, I support the neighborhood councils. I support the neighborhood associations and I want to make sure that. All neighborhood counselors are strong and empowered and that they are there on the community, educating, informing. And encouraging other people to get involved in the political process because there is power in people and I want to elevate that power. I believe that we need to do something about the corruption. We need to have more transparency. We need more accountability. And I will be the type of, uh, leader that will bring that to you. I believe also that. Change is needed. We can no longer accept what we've been given with career politicians. We need change. I had the courage to throw my name in a hat and I trust that you will have the courage to, to select change in your leadership. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Teresa. Um, and our final and fifth uh candidate in this round is former council member Nick Pacheco. Nick? There you are. Come off mute.
Yeah, my name is. Hi, good evening, everybody. Uh, I decided to run for the seat because I was tired of people using C D fourteen as a stepping stone. As you can see, in the past history, we have seen people just abuse the position, use it for our own enrichment. I'm tired of seeing that happen to my district, a district I love, a city I love. I don't want that happening again. The one thing that you gotta understand, when I started as council member, I made sure that I was accountable to the residents. That's why I had no appointment necessary office hours. The third Monday of every month, I would circulate. Around the district and make sure that people could see me first come, first served. I haven't seen another elected official use that tool to be accountable to the residents. I'm tired of seeing residents being ignored, the neighborhood councils need more power. We need to make sure that everyone has a voice, not just people in established positions, but everyone in the community. That's why I'm going to get back in there and double up on no appointment necessary office hours. Have two Mondays a week. A month where you can come see me directly and talk to me and tell me your positions and put pressure on me to deliver for you. And that's why I want to be the council member for this district.
Thank you so much. Uh, those are the five candidates in this particular round of council district fourteen candidates. Um, we are going to now move into the issue questions again. Um, if you were joining us for the first hour. Of our conversation, uh, you met all of these residents. They shared a little bit about their stories. Uh, but now they're going to jump straight into the questions. Um, and again, these are mostly sixty second uh responses, uh, with one of them toward the end, a ninety second response. I'm going to pass things to resident, uh, Marissa Roy.
All right, let's get to it. Um, so hi, everybody. Again, my name is Marissa Roy. She/her pronouns in downtown Los Angeles. Um, I'm going to be asking a question about unarmed crisis response. So in your vision for L A, what types of incidents do you think are appropriate for police to respond to, if any? And what do you believe should be attended to outside of the police, if any? What models of unarmed crisis response are you interested in? And how would you like to make this a real, how, how would you like to fund this and make this a reality? You'll have sixty seconds each and we'll start with Dr. Diaz.
Um, thank you so much for this um question. Unarmed response crisis uh response. First of all and first and foremost, we need the L A P D to focus on crime such as homicide, assault, rape, robbery and other violent acts of crime. Secondly, in terms of police brutality, we need to nip it in the bud. That I am not tolerant of any type of police brutality toward anyone. And unfortunately, that has been a situation. In terms of unarmed response crisis. Response, we need to work with um teams like L A Circle, which. Have social workers and ambassadors who have been victims of homelessness. We need to also in, in, ensure that we assess and deescalate and provide a support system to help a person in crisis. As a social worker who has worked in emergency um hospitals in downtown Los Angeles, I saw firsthand on situations. Of, of people who are homeless, people who have been victimized by police, people who have been um human sex trafficked. Thank you.
Um, next we'll go to Jenny Guerrero.
Thank you. I think it is important that we define a crisis. Perhaps it is time to empower and expand the crisis team. They should have the same access to resources as our fire department, paramedics and police departments. But this should be augmented by the county, um, by the county health department. Someone who is having a mental breakdown may not need L A P D to show up. We need the ability to deescalate certain situations. This crisis team should have the ability to call dispatch and request L A P D or an ambulance if appropriate. We do have a need for, for police to respond to calls of murders, domestic violence, which are the most dangerous calls, mass shootings, et cetera. I think we absolutely need to have well-trained officers. This includes continuous training and recertifications. This is something the military does well and they must keep all of their certifications current. Circle is great and it should be offered throughout the entire city of Los Angeles.
Thank you. Um, Teresa?
Thank you for the question. I've been working in this space for the last six to eight months with L A Forward and other non, uh, other advocacy groups. And um, according to the Police Protection League. The Los Angeles City and also the L A P D, they've already agreed to not respond to twenty eight types of nine one one calls. And I agree with those calls. They range from nonviolent criminal, nonviolent and noncriminal calls all the way to panhandling. It should not be involved in parking violations, public intoxication or responding to a mental health. No mother who has a child having a mental health crisis should be afraid to call to nine one one for help. So I believe in that. I've been working again with advocating for this. Circle is one of the programs that I'm interested in. We already have it in downtown. I would love to see that expand in other areas. The um therapeutic vans is another in. M, P M R T is another model that I'm looking at and I would love to see that expand. What we're doing in our group right now is we are meeting with all types of electives. We are meeting with all type of Alexis and we're trying to move towards getting a um elected leader summit so we can talk about unarmed crisis response.
That's time.
Thank you. Oh, sorry, got me. Uh, Nick?
Yes. Yes.
Oh, uh, the question, do you need me to read it again?
No, no, it's fine. So let me just start off by saying that in two thousand and three, when I was Chair of the Budget Committee. I stood up against the chief and the mayor who wanted to hire three hundred and twenty officers, which was a bad decision at that time. Because recently I saw that when council members are going for this new contract, many people criticized him as being afraid of the chief police and afraid of the mayor. I can tell you, I'm not afraid of being one of those. As former prosecutor, people may think that I would give the police a slight or give them a chance or give them some sort of. A relief that is not warranted when they abuse or violate civil rights of individuals. I have sued six police departments on violations of civil rights from my clients and sell four of them. I believe that police should not be a paramilitary organization. They should be serving the people. And for nonviolent offenses and mental health issues, we should not be sending out police. We should be sending out people from the Office of Unarmed Response. And it should be funded by the, the cannabis tax revenue. Every year, they generate over a hundred million dollars and we're not spending it where we should be spending it on mental health and services to our people.
Thank you, Samir.
So my brother was shot to death by sheriff deputies responding to a nonviolent domestic disturbance. So this, this issue is very impersonal to me. Excessive force is an epidemic in America, in American policing. The Pentagon's militarization of our police forces certainly has something to do with it, as does training. But we can talk policy and solutions all night. For me and many in C D fourteen, the issue is about leadership. I knew, hell, many of us knew far before George Floyd's violent death, that some police officers were lethal. Where's our leadership been on this matter? Fundraising filings show that many of them have been distracted. Fundraising filings show that many of them have been distracted, running for their next office. The city clerk's records show that this exact issue has been raised at least as early as 2011. Think about that. For 12 years, council has known this is an issue. We haven't, we haven't begun solving this. We keep electing the same kind of career politicians to represent CD-14 with the same disappointing results. We need something different. We need people who have been working on this solution for decades, because we've lived these stories, not because it's convenient or it's timely to do so. What happens when the headlines fade? We all know what happens, politicians.
Thank you so much, Samir, and that is time. Thanks so much. Um, and our next question, um, will come from, um, again, Carla de Paz. Carla? Call you there? I will go ahead and fill in for Carla, uh, at this point. Um, Carla might be off and away. Um, folks here know that Carla works with CPC, um, and asked a question about social housing. The social housing question, um, is, do you support social housing, um, in Los Angeles? So, what would you do to make this a reality? Do you support other paths to decommodify housing? And if so, what? And we're gonna start with Jenny Guerrero. Jenny?
Hi, thank you. Housing needs to be addressed for a variety of needs. Not all needs are the same. It should not be a one-size-fits-all. Not, um, there is a possibility for social housing, and it is a great step forward, but it will take a lot more than that. We need to ensure that all proposed housing should be reviewed by mental health experts, so that we are not creating dangerous or unsafe environments for the tenants or their communities. We need to catch those people or families that are on the verge of homelessness. We need to change the criteria to qualify for services. We should not continue to require people to be homeless for six months, nine months, or a year before they can be offered services. Why are we making those people lose everything before we provide help? We should have programs for those who need supportive housing to be extended by an extended time or permanent housing. People continue to be threatened with losing the roof over their heads, but we expect them to be okay. I will focus on reintegrating of people into society. People are not disposable, and we should not be treating them as such.
Thank you so much, Jenny. Um, our next candidate for this question on social housing is Teresa Hillary. Teresa?
Thank you. Um, I also believe that housing is a human right. And I think that we should have all types of housing. When it comes to social housing, I'm, I'm open to considering that. And what consideration means to me is evidence-based data on the short and long-term impacts, not only on the housing in, um, sector, but also other sectors, like communities, like education, workforce, generational wealth, and safety. I had a wonderful conversation with a gentleman about a month ago when we talked about social housing. He actually introduced the concept. And he pushed back, I pushed back, he pushed back, I pushed back. It was a wonderful conversation. I actually am joining his, his group to learn more about it. And that's the type of leader that I am. I am the leader where I don't shy away from things. I'm a leader where I'm open to exploring all possibilities. I'm a leader where I'm not in the room with only people who think like me or look like me. I want to be in the room with different thoughts, so we can create the best solutions possible. So, again, yes, I'm open to considering social housing. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Teresa. Uh, our next candidate for the social housing question is former council member Nick Pacheco. Nick?
Uh, first of all, I'd begin by saying that I do support social housing. I don't think we should rely on the private sector to provide all the housing when we have public land that can be utilized to house people. And the idea of the tenants managing the property is even the best thing I could think of. When they have a stake interest in how that land and property is being used, I think we get better results. The first thing we should do, though, is look at where it's been successful. Visit that city, if it's New York or Vienna, and get to the nuts and bolts of how we implement social housing in LA. Learning from people who already have the experience, not just sort of try and guess at it. Now, funding should also come, like I said, from the cannabis tax money that comes in every year. It's over a hundred million dollars. They're not spending it in the city where it should be done. They're spending it just in the general fund, which is wrong. And I want to make sure that when we get things done here, we're doing things for the people who deserve the best service, and that's the residents of our city.
Thank you so much, Nick. Um, our fourth candidate, uh, for this question about social housing is Samir Batar. Samir?
So, we've needed more affordable housing in our city for decades, but corrupt and negligent politicians have led us with no solutions. However, our city has an embarrassing and terrible history with, with public housing. We have no indication whatsoever that it can and will do any better in providing safe and desirable homes. I do not think that we can faithfully address this issue without talking about generational wealth. The principal way that our society finds itself in this crisis is that too few of us can afford to own a home. The city of LA has an enormous ability to foster homeownership and help those of us historically disenfranchised from homeownership. Because as unfortunate as it is, in America, financial security is a human right. My mom rented and was evicted over 15 times growing up. There just were not enough paths for her, as a single and battered, uneducated mother of four, to help build herself up. I wholeheartedly support programs to address the housing crisis most of its face in LA. But I don't believe that public housing is the solution. I think we need to use the, the weight of LA to lead on visionary solutions.
Thank you so much, Samir, that is, that is your time. Thank you so much. Um, we're gonna move to Dr. Nadine Diaz, next. Dr. Diaz?
Thank you. Uh, yes, I believe in social housing, and I do believe that we need to triage who needs housing. Um, the, the career politicians talk about, let's build housing, but there's no plan of action on who we're gonna serve. And we have to look at the diverse population out there. We have veterans who, who are in need of housing. We have women of domestic violence, LGBTQT, undocumented, documented immigrants, youth, college students. And we even have the mentally challenged, the physically challenged, those who are human sex trafficked. We have elderly. In Los Angeles, the elderly population who are becoming homeless represents 25%. There is, uh, food disparity, insecurity, there's isolation. As a board member of the Los Angeles Department on Aging, Council on Aging, we discuss things like this. We really have to think out of the box and be innovative, and work with experts in the field, such as social workers. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Dr. Diaz. Um, and that concludes our, uh, all of our candidates' responses on social housing. I'm gonna pass things to Jessica again, to reintroduce our question about council expansion. Jessica?
Thank you, Godfrey. Uh, Jessica Panduro, once again, she heard Ayo within her CD struggle. And my question is, do you support city council expansion to provide equitable representation for all Angelenos? How many seats do you think we should have, or the appropriate population per council district, and why? And we'll get started with Teresa Hillary.
Right, the short answer is yes. I do support expanding the city council, um, to be more responsive to our constituents. I've heard anywhere from 21 seats to 33 seats. Without more database analysis, I'm not prepared to tell you which seat I think, which number I think is best. I think we need more database analysis for that. However, there are some fighting principles that I would go with. Keeping communities together, elevating different voices, increasing political power of the underrepresented. Now, having said that, even if we increase the number of seats, it won't change the character, nature, or culture of City Hall. We need reforms that will increase accountability and transparency. I would like to see two additional reforms. One, strengthening the Ethics Commission, and two, removing land use and planning issues from city councils, of the city council's jurisdiction. There's a downtown saying, when you see something, say something. And I think that should apply to City Hall. When you see wrong, you say, you call it out, and you hold them accountable. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Uh, former member, council member Nick Pacheco?
Yes, uh, when I was on the Charter Reform Commission, we put on the ballot the expansion of city council, and it did not pass. Uh, I think the main reason was because I think we did too small of a number. Uh, if we're gonna do this, I think we should be bold. We should do one for every 100,000 people. We should put somewhere around 40 to 41, actually, it should be an odd number, with that votes, you know, don't end up with ties. So, I would say instead of talking about 25 or 30, we should have about 40 people, 41, so that there's no tight votes. It'd be bold, it's not, you know, make this a small increment change, it's making a, a major change, so that people see that we're serious about this, that we want individual representation, where they can hold their council member accountable. And once again, I'm gonna harp on this, because when I had no appointment necessary office hours, we spoke directly to the constituents. They were a part of the solutions that we put in place my last two years, and we had great success in the community, showing the people that we cared about them. And I have not seen another elected official use that tool since 20 years ago when I did it.
Thank you. Uh, now, Samir Bitar?
Yes, we most certainly need government reform. Three-quarters of us in LA recognize that the current system just isn't working. We have one of the worst, uh, scores when it comes to proportional representation in the country. Uh, the burden of serving 300,000 people, not to mention vast square miles of infrastructure, has rendered many council offices just ineffective in addressing the nuts and bolts issues, certainly that are facing CD-4, uh, 14 neighborhoods. But surprisingly, council members aren't breaking any rules. The city charter does not require that, that they consult with us. But what if it did? What if there was a mechanism in place to, to require them to reach out, to, to collaborate with us? So, many have questioned the, the effectiveness of neighborhood councils, but the root issue, I think, is the law doesn't mandate that council members consult with neighborhood councils. But what if it did? Just as the city requires input from particular agencies before decisions are made, we can imagine a more inclusive way of governing that requires community input before decisions are made, and that mechanism is, in fact, through the neighborhood councils.
Uh, Dr. Nadine Diaz?
Do we need to expand, um, the city council? Well, I think before we do that, we need to really assess the current city council leadership to determine what is working and what has not been working for all constituents. Most importantly, I think we need to have the constituents at the table. We need to hear from them, we need their voice, we need their ideas. A lot of the times, they have been kept out of the process, we have been kept out of the process, and decis- decisions are being made in the Eiffel Tower at City Hall by people who are making backroom deals with these career politicians. That is what has been happening. And before we move forward to expand, again, the city council, the needs of the people must be heard, they must be assessed, and they must be met, and part of a plan that's implemented to represent all our constituents. That is key in this, uh, plan of action, and that's what I want to do. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Uh, Jenny Guerrero?
I do support the expansion of city council members for the city of Los Angeles. I believe a disservice is being done to the communities that they serve. Currently, we have 15 city council districts. I think it is reasonable for us to increase to 21 districts. I think it has not been done or entertained because of fear, the fear of losing power and income. When you're in a position of leadership, one must put their personal desires aside and do what is right for the constituency. I think an independent entity, along with community leaders, needs to lead the redistricting process. This process should be an open and transparent process, not done behind closed doors or in private buildings. It should take into account not only its population, but also its square mileage as well. I think this will also serve as a deterrent to keep career politicians from cycling through our communities for their next paycheck. The city council position should not be a resume filler or a stepping stone to the next position. This position should go to someone who truly cares about the well-being of its residents.
Thank you all for answering this question, and now pass it over to Lindsay.
Thank you, Jessica. Hi, again, everyone. Um, as earlier, my question is about policy implementation of climate and mobility plans in LA. And you will have 90 seconds, not 60 this time, for this question. The question is, LA City has a follow-through problem on both its climate and mobility plans. For mobility, the city of Los Angeles made a commitment to its residents with the Mobility Plan 2035, focusing on improving safety, access, infrastructure, data-informed decision-making, and healthy communities for all those that walk, ride, roll, and drive in the city. But since passing in 2015, less than 10% of the plan has been implemented. Similarly, we've declared that we'll shift to 100% renewables by 2035, and oil drilling, cut car trips in half by 2035, reduce greenhouse gas emissions by 25% by 2025, and yet, we aren't on track to make any of these goals, some of which are enshrined in law. Knowing you can't do everything at once, which specific aspects of climate policy and mobility plans are the biggest priority for your district? What steps would you take to ensure full implementation of those parts of those priorities? Again, you'll have 90 seconds, not 60, for this question. First up, we have former council member Nick Pacheco.
Yes, thank you for the question. Um, first of all... Is that coming through? Okay. Am I, okay, thank you. Uh, first of all, I just want to recognize that when X site is still a problem, both heights, and that hasn't been solved, that tells us that we have failed leadership at the state level, adjusting that issue. So, we need to really tackle why it's going on and put pressure on that as a community. Once again, this is really important that we work with our residents and mobilize them against such a big issue. I also would like to support and would advocate for free public transportation, because once we get people moving on public transportation, that's the best thing for our climate. And also, uh, protected bike lanes. I was on my bicycle recently and found it very difficult to transport, to move around the city, and there's some very serious issues about just the state of the highway or the road. One of the things that people don't realize is that, um, the city, when they allocate money for a street repair, it's individually divided 15 ways. That's not the proper way to divide that money. They don't take into effect how much usage a road gets. If we just change the formula and increase the usage, or include the usage rate of the street, then we'll see improvements in the lower-income communities, where people are using the streets more, or people are coming to the community to get to downtown. That's one of the problems we have, is this sort of equal distribution of money for street repair. I would stop that, or fight to make sure that we include usage rates on the roads, so that the streets that most use and most, uh, deteriorated get improvements and get attention.
Thank you so much. Next up, we have Samir Bitar.
Thank you, Lindsay. I think that the city needs to shift into a more proactive and assertive position on climate change. I think we need to create a new standing permanent Climate Crisis Committee on City Council to coordinate all that we, that we must accomplish. As Lindsay had said, we have not updated the mobility plans in 2016. Last year, the state mandated that within 12 years, there will be no more gas-powered cars, right? All will be electric, uh, electric charging or, or hydrogen. That means we need massive infrastructure to, to charge these millions of cars that we'll have. And last year, City Council passed a law outlawing gas stoves in favor of electric ones, but didn't address the energy grid in doing so. I think for LA to implement policies of this magnitude, we need planning to have started yesterday. Beyond green infrastructure, we also need to be more assertive in our efforts to incentivize equitable expansion of green spaces, which is desperately needed in all of our historically disrespected neighborhoods. But where is CD-14 leadership on developing the infrastructure we need? Without this leadership, these tasks fall to a number of understaffed city agencies that are left to figure things out on their own. We need leadership with vision and focus to bring businesses and people together to collaborate on funding and cooperation on these massive projects, like increasing electricity for all of us, right? We need leadership on utility-scale battery storage, EV charging master plan, hydrogen filling stations. We've tried the career politician thing again and again. Where's it left us? Behind schedule. It's time for something different.
Thank you, Samir. Next up, I'll pass it to Dr. Nadine Diaz.
Thank you so much. Mobility, public safety is key to protecting people who use mass transit. And most of the people who use mass transit are working-class people. Also, we need to protect those who ride bicycles, who walk, and who also use mopeds. Land use developers need to consider mobility when developing projects in CD-14. That has not been the case. There must be a balance that considers the community, the neighborhoods, and the people who represent them. We need to consider people who are physically and mentally impaired, whether they are blind, deaf, demented, or medically compromised because of health conditions. We need to consider all age groups of people in the process. Transportation impacts all of us, and we need to make sure that their needs are met. In terms of climate change, the plan is not moving due to the council leadership in truly making it happen. There is a lot of talking, but not enough walking. Major implement, implementation is at a standstill, standstill because of the bureaucracy that exists. Boyle Heights, for example, in the 1930s, the city council voted to have all industry, industry built on the east side to protect the west side. We have been suffering in terms of environmental injustice. This is part of climate change. And we also have to look at the history and the policies that were put in place a long time ago, which we are talking about today in terms of climate change. which we are talking about today in terms of climate change and mobility. Thank you.
Thank you so much for that. Next up, we have Jenny Guerrero.
Thank you. So for mobility, our communities are lacking in the ability to walk the sidewalks. They are lacking the ability to move in their wheelchairs. We have many sidewalks that are uprooted by the giant ficus trees that are cluttered by encampments, trash, human waste, and even vendors that are inconsiderate and obstruct the right of way. We have seen, I have seen many friends on wheelchairs have to use the bike lane or the street itself just to walk because the sidewalks are inadequate. The safety of my communities is paramount and of the utmost importance. We continue to have many streets that are inaccessible by the fire department trucks, by the ambulances. We have streets that are deteriorating. This cannot go on. The mobility plans that I have seen for the community of El Cerrino have been very lackluster. They were created with the purpose for commuters from other cities to drive through and bypass the community as quickly as possible. This is detrimental to our business community in El Cerrino. For climate, we need to look at this and address what could be implemented immediately to catch up. Perhaps this means requiring all city vehicles, including sanitation, parking enforcement, squad cars, et cetera, to not run idle, but to be turned off. This would reduce emissions, fuel expansions, respiratory health hazards, improve quality of air, and extend the life of the vehicles and reduce the frequency of maintenance. We need to also reclaim. Thank you.
Thanks so much. And last but not least, we have Teresa Hillary.
Teresa, you're on mute.
Thank you. Thank you for this question. In 2020, I was hit by an eighteen-wheeler on Highway Five. And it totaled my car and I started taking public transportation. When you take public transportation, you see a lot of things. I saw the heaviness of people who are struggling just to make ends meet, struggling with their children. I saw elderly struggling. See, people in wheelchairs are struggling because our sidewalks are dilapidated. Standing outside in the heat because there's no shade, there's no canopy. Standing in the rain because there's no covering. So we need, you know, shelter, we need lighting, we need our sidewalks fixed, we need better connectivity. People who are taking the transit have to get to their, you know, jobs on time. If they don't, they could be fired. So we need better connectivity. We also need, it's not a one-size-fits-all. Every location has a different plan. For an example, Eagle Rock has the Reconnecting Communities Pilot Program. Rock the Boulevard, I know Colorado Boulevard, there's issues with the improvement there. And businesses are concerned about what it would mean for their business. So what I would do in implementing, I would bring all the stakeholders to the table and find allies. Allies on the city council, allies on the neighborhood council, allies in the community, allies in the business world to come together to find out what the priorities are because we have limited resources, find out what the priorities are, and then implement those priorities. Thank you.
Thank you, Teresa. Thank you again to all the candidates for your responses, and I'm going to pass it over to Sasha.
Great. Thank you, everyone. I want to especially thank the candidates, first and foremost, for their service to our communities here in CD fourteen and their time tonight and their thoughtful and concise responses. Now, we're going to move on to closing statements. So each of you will have ninety seconds to share whatever you want. Again, could be a conclusion, responses to things the other candidates shared, info to keep in touch, a song and dance, anything that you'd like to share in these last ninety seconds. We'll again continue to rotate speakers. We'll do alphabetical order by last name. So to get started, I'll invite Samir Bittar to close out.
So I think we're standing at the cusp of what could be a transformative moment for us in CD fourteen. So I'm stepping forward with a fresh, more collaborative model of leadership. My background as an artist, as a civic leader, an educator, has honed my ability to craft novel solutions for things like neighborhood revitalization, trauma-informed care, and others. I've learned to dream big, strategize effectively, and then dive in and work hard to make those dreams reality. On neighborhood council and nonprofit boards that I serve on, I am known as someone who rolls up his sleeves, works very hard to tackle significant and sometimes controversial issues when they're the right things to address. I'm a queer man in a city who doesn't have one single queer member on city council. I live downtown, blocks from Skid Row. Distressed communities are my communities. I've always lived in urban cores, always will. I am the arts candidate. I'm the veteran candidate. I'm the candidate that takes mass transit regularly. I think we need warriors for Los Angeles for CD fourteen with a proven track record of effectiveness, and I believe that I'm that person. We need leaders that collaborate with others and listen to people, are not corrupt, not just those who they'll vote for, right, or who line their pockets. We've tried the same political insider thing in L.A. again and again with the same disappointing results. So I'm running to offer something completely different for CD fourteen.
Thank you. All right. Dr. Nadine Diaz?
Thank you. I'm Dr. Diaz. I'm a third-generation constituent of CD fourteen. My background is American of Mexican, Japanese, Basque, and Yaki Indian. I have lived, worked, and went to school in this community ever since I was born in nineteen sixty-two. I care about this community, and what is happening to our CD fourteen is that unfortunately, we have leaders at the table who are career politicians, who moved into the district to run and/or who are looking for their next job. We do not need any of the career politicians that were here this evening. We need real people at the table who represent you and I. I am a social worker. I have a doctorate in social work, a master's in social work, and a bachelor's in cultural anthropology. I am a health professional, a professor, and I've worked on Skid Row in the trenches from five a.m. to five p.m. with the medical team, providing indirect and direct services. In terms of land use, I look at land use as the canvas in terms of how we plan our community. And we need to stop having international developers make decisions on what is built in our community. In Boyle Heights, for example, the historical integrity has been raped because the developers have no historical connection to who we are. This is happening in Little Tokyo, in downtown, in Eagle Rock, all over the district, El Cerrino, Hillside Village, everywhere. And there is no voice at the community level. That's who I want to represent.
Thank you. Jenny Guerrero?
As the person who has spoken up at City Hall and at the neighborhood council meetings, I can tell you how stressful it is to provide a soundbite of information on all these topics that really require a much deeper conversation. Nevertheless, I am grateful for the opportunity and that I was able to address you all today. I would be happy to discuss all of these topics further and in length. Just reach out to me. I am ready to lead CD fourteen. I am ready to protect CD fourteen. We are not a dumping ground to the rest of the city. I am fighting for equity, not just equality. I am fighting for our youth, families, individuals, seniors, and our businesses. Individual homeownership and property rights need to be protected, and they need to be supported. The arts needs to come back to L.A. in a big way. We don't need Sacramento telling us what we need in our communities or what we deserve to have. We deserve to have a true leader, a strong voice and conviction. I am track-proven advocate, and I have proven my commitment to my community. I have done it without ever receiving a paycheck. That is how committed I am. I'm warning you all now. I will be out advertised, out fundraised, but it will not stop me. Help me to get the message out. Let's not settle for the machine. I am not a polished politician, but I am genuine, and I am here to represent, and I will be present. The time is now. I'm running a grassroots campaign, and I can't be bought off, which means I need your help. Visit me at jenniguerrero.com and follow me on social media. Thank you.
Thank you. Teresa Hillary? Teresa, you there? You're still on mute.
Jeez Louise. All right. Well, I got through my first debate. It's only going up from here. I want to thank you so much, everybody. L.A. Forward for inviting me. Thank you for all of you for tuning in. This has been a very exciting conversation. I'm so glad I had the opportunity to share some of my thoughts, share who I am. Again, I am an attorney, a real estate attorney, thirty years of community service. Moved downtown Los Angeles on a part of the neighborhood council. I'm a part of the South Park Neighborhood Association. I'm a part of the Skid Row community. When I saw Skid Row for the first time, once again, I jumped right in to help, and that's the way I am. I am a balanced businesswoman. I'm a good steward with finances. I am a negotiator. I'm a problem solver. I love people, and I really want to make a difference in this community, and I believe that we can make a difference together. I believe people are powerful, and I want to empower, once again, the neighborhood councils. I want to empower the neighborhood associations. I want to empower just people to get involved in the political decision-making power. We do have power. We can no longer allow the political career politicians to take advantage of CD fourteen. And that's what's been happening for all these years. They are taking advantage of us. And I'm saying no more. I've taken the courage to run into this race, and I'm trusting that you will take the courage to vote differently or reimagine leadership. Thank you.
Thank you. And finally, former council member Nick Pacheco.
Thank you for this opportunity to speak with everyone directly. I'm running again for city council because I'm tired of the Sacramento politicians coming here and using CD fourteen as a stepping stone. I don't understand why they're so afraid of their constituents. I've not seen any of them hold open office hours where anyone could just walk in and talk to them directly. That was a staple of my service on the council, that we made sure that we heard from the residents directly. It's so invaluable when you hear people directly tell you the problems and what they think is the solution so that they know that the solution is coming from the ground up. It's not coming from the top down. Too many people see government as only coming from the top down. My service back in nineteen ninety-nine, two thousand and three was definitely the opposite. I tried to incorporate everyone to make sure that everyone was included in problem-solving. I'm not afraid to fight anyone who takes on our vision. I fought the county when I wanted local hiring, when they built the new hospital. I wanted to make sure they have a pedestrian bridge from the parking lot straight into the hospital. I fought everyone who wanted to not include the wetlands and hazard park. We make sure we got those taken back from the railroad tracks. And so for me, I see myself as fighting for the community from day one. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you to all the candidates. I'll pass it over to Godfrey.
Thank you so much, Sasha, and the rest of the residents who joined us tonight to share of themselves and to ask questions that were really important for us to get to know. I want to shout out all of the candidates who joined us tonight. I know that this is one of the most courageous things that folks can do, especially if this is the first time anybody is throwing their hat in the ring. I am a firm believer that elections and campaigns are opportunities for public conversation. Like, this is when we get to see democracy happen. And then, of course, everybody who joined us tonight, there's sixty-seven of you here. We started at six o'clock. I'm sure people are hungry and tired, but people came here with their minds, really wanting to learn about all the candidates here. We hope that tonight gave you a taste of who these candidates are. We heard that these were soundbites, right? These are very short opportunities to get to know these candidates. And we want to make sure that in the chat box, if they're sharing their email addresses, sharing their links, that you're taking the future opportunity to continue learning about themselves and their campaigns. Everyone who was here tonight was recorded, and therefore, you're going to be able to find their responses to the questions on the website that you see on your screen. That's very likely that this will be uploaded as soon as tomorrow so that you can continue to share these responses with folks who you want to make sure are hearing from you and are hearing about these candidates. And we want to make sure that for the many folks who weren't able to be here tonight, that this is accessible. Again, none of these candidates can make it to the ballot unless there are signatures captured enough in November for them to get on there. So if you're interested in supporting their campaign, they're dropping links. But you also need to make sure that they capture enough signatures from constituents to make it to the ballot. And then in December, we will find out who actually makes it to the ballot before the February and March election. Good luck to everybody who is here tonight. We know there was a tenth candidate who announced election or announced running for election yesterday. These are the other nine candidates who are running as well. And we hope you continue to get to know them. Thank you so much for joining us tonight. And we hope everybody has a great evening and has a lot to talk about. Thanks so much.